Morihong and um he's a long uh longtime friend of mine and amazing man. Can't wait for you guys to hear his story and and talk a little bit with him, so I'm gonna go ahead and bring him on so you guys can meet him. If you don't already know who he is or have met him, let's bring him on. Here, show it's true. Hey Tony.
I'm doing great, how are you?
Doing fantastic, brother, how's everything going?
It's going good, good as uh good as can be with the situation that we're all living through right now.
That's right, that's good to hear though. So, how's everything going with you, man? What are you doing new these days?
Joe, uh as you mentioned in the introduction, I worked for about thirty-five and a half years with the county. And I did Hispanic affairs, community relations, a number of jobs I did, uh records administrator, property manager. I did all kinds of stuff for the county, but my biggest focus was community relations specializing in people who spoke Spanish. You know, that was a big deal. Uh I was a president of the Hispanic Employee Council for about seven years. And we did a lot of things back in the early nineties to to set the stage for what we have today. I'm happy about that, proud of that, proud of a lot of work we did, and that just me, I've always been like in the middle of it. I've always been surrounded by good people that that believe and work hard.
I definitely see, I mean, you definitely hustle and I've seen you around and I know you pretty well and I can tell you definitely uh not only take your job serious, but you know, you're always out and about and and in the him in the Hispanic community, always helping people out for sure.
Thank you, Joe, thank you, and it's it's good to see you grow up, you know, and see what you've done with your business, with the flan business, with with something that you love, and that's something I I like, I like to see people who have a passion. Find your passion and excel in it, and you've done that, hmm, thank you for the invitation today.
It only took me forty years, but I think I found it, I know I found it.
Hey, there's people that live their lives and never find it, so you're lucky, if you found it at forty years, you're a lucky man.
I consider myself lucky, I can say that for sure. So, you were an employee for Hillsborough County as a as the liaison for Hillsborough County for, you said thirty-five and a half years. Definitely know the area, you obviously know the area very well, and I'm sure you've become pretty good friends and and uh here with the the majority of the businesses, and the majority here probably know you pretty well. So, you're running.
Joe, let's talk about the county, because I worked for the county, Hillsborough County. A lot of them live in in the county, sometimes don't know if they live, that they live in the county, they think because they live in Tampa, they live in Plant City, or they live in Temple Terrace, or they don't live in the county. All three of those cities belong inside the county, so you do live in the county. And there is a county representative that represents you even though you live in the city. The difference is in the city, you also have your municipal, you have your mayor, and you have your city council people. And that's in all those cities that I've just mentioned. Working for the county, this is a big county, this county is the size of Rhode Island. Uh landwise, it's about twelve hundred and something sixty-six square mile, that's a big chunk. You can go all the way from Lute and drive all the way to Fort Lonesome, there's a lot of land in between there. And there's different communities and all different from Keystone to to Town and Country, to West Tampa, to Apollo Beach, to Brandon, to Valrico, to Ruskin, my mama, Plant City, Temple Terrace, it's all different.
We're one of the biggest counties in the state, right?
I believe we are, we are one of the big.
I think we're like the third largest county or the second largest county.
Correct, and our population is bigger than a lot of states, which is incredible. And we're looking at this census this year, and it's so important that people fill out the census this year. Get counted, I worked with the census, I worked for the county, but I did the census. The census for over um. I did nineteen ninety-two thousand, don't open the door, two thou- I'm a babysitter too, two thousand ten and. Nineteen ninety-two thousand, two thousand ten, that's thirty, every ten years I did, I work the census, so important for people to get counted, that's how we get our money back from the federal government, that's how we get counted, that's how we come up with the budgets that we get from federal federal funds.
So if people, so if people are neglecting to fill out that information, then neglecting money.
Yeah, and they're scared, some people are scared, they think that they're they're gonna use that information against them, it's against the law for the census to share that with any other government agency. It's for numbers, it's for counting, it's for resources and allocations of resources. And we need that, we need to know, we need to know how many kids we got in the community, we need to know what the ethnicities are, we need to know where people live in communities, so their money. So uh. Like I said, today, I'm an emergency babysitter, which I love. I'm very, I'm very happy to be able to help out.
Well, so, tell everybody a little bit about what you're doing now, you're you're actually running for county commissioner, district one.
Yeah, a county commission district seats, they come up and the the county's split into four, okay? It's seven districts, but it's cut like a like a pie of four, four pieces. And there's three other commissioners that are at large, so the county commission has seven members. You live in a community and your community's inside a district, so everybody has one district commissioner, and then you get to vote for three at large, three at large means they cover the whole county. So, I am in the run for county commission dis- district one. That district comes all the way west of I seventy-five, up from Ruskin, Apollo Beach, comes in through um. Gibson Ten, wraps around Harbor Island, Davis Island, it takes it all of South Tampa, and it goes up Arminia, Howard Armenia, all the way to Limeball, then it goes west. So it takes in Town and Country, Egypt Lake, Lato, Dana Shores, Sweetwater, West Chase, Country Chase, and it goes up north along Sheldon, on the west of Sheldon, and it takes in Fawn Ridge, you go lower up to Keystone. So it's a, it's a good chunk. Hey, no. No, you can play in a little while, come here, when I finish this, we'll play, come on, come here, no. This is, this is real life, this is who we are.
This is live, this is real life.
Anyway, so let's try to do it, and to run for office, people have asked me if I was really crazy or not. You know, they go, you must be out of your mind, the county representative for that district will represent about three hundred and thirty thousand people, that's a big chunk of people.
Well, I I would like to say something for that. Knowing you, knowing you, if there's somebody that can do that, I'll bet you, I I'm with you a hundred percent for sure.
All right, Joe, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the kind words and and the attitude, and that's what it takes, it takes people. Now, here it is, I'm not a professional, uh what do you call that, politician? I'm not running because I need a job, I had a beautiful career, a friend of mine who's a judge told me, if he was ever a judge, he put me in the mental ward, because he said, you gotta be crazy. You had a great career, you retired, you got a beautiful life, why do you wanna do this? My answer is, I'm a people person, and there's still a lot to do to fix this community for for kids like my grandkids, for your kids, for our kids, for our senior citizens. Look at the disaster that we're in right now, we have to have people in place that care about people, and that's who I am. I'm one of those people that have always cared.
I mean, you're doing it with your action, just retired, after working for the county for thirty-five odd years, and now you're, you know, you wanna get back into helping the people here in the community.
Yep, that's exactly what I wanna do. I'm trying to, I I'm trying to make it a better place, that's always been my goal. On my Facebook page in the background, it says something I did back in nineteen ninety-two and and I believe it, my roots are here, this is, this is our land, this is where we live, this is where we chose, we choose to live here. We don't live here because we have to, we choose to live here, it's a beautiful place, and I want this place to be good for my, like I said, for my kids, my grandkids, for your kids, your grandkids in the future, for the people, this is our community, that's what I'd like to take to the board. I wanna be the best representative possible, I wanna, I wanna be the way I I've always been. You call me, can talk to me, you have an issue, I'll talk with you, if I can help you, I can help you, if I can't, I'll say, hey Joe, I'm sorry, I can't do it, and give you the reason why. You go ahead.
So, what does it take for someone to run for office as a normal citizen? If uh you know, anybody just wants to, they decide they wanna actually uh, what do they have to do?
They actually have to have a plan, and I'll tell you why, because I I took this on, and I'm not a career politician at all. I'm somebody who has come up, who wants to make a change, but to do that change, you have to become uh part of the system. And to become part of the system means you have to raise funds, you know, the people that know me have no problem knowing my message, they know what I'm about. But to get to the other people in the in the commission district, it takes funds, and sadly, it takes funds, it takes money to do that. And um that's the hardest part for me, I don't like asking people for a lot, never have, and I've always given. And but it takes funding, and people don't understand that, they go, how much is it gonna cost to to win this race? And I'm like, I wanna earn this race, that's not a contest for me, it's not like a winning contest, it's a thing that I I wanna earn, I wanna earn people's respect, I wanna earn people's vote. But to get the message out there, it takes money sadly, and sometimes the other sides have a lot more money, because they're, they've been at it a long time. Me, I just started late in February, and now with this coronavirus issue, this is really pausing a lot of things, and people ask me all the time. Hey, um, you wanna talk about the campaigns, the campaign's not dead, it's not even, it's just in standby, because I want you to worry more about your family, about your, you know, your health, to me, that's more important right now than anything else.
Yeah, so how, so talking about this coronavirus and COVID nineteen, what is, how is it affecting uh your?
It affects my campaign more or less the way it affects everything else, I'm gonna do the stay-at-home, safer-at-home, I believe that. I think from the medical professionals that I've spoken to, have spoken to me, that I have a number of friends who are doctors and nurses, who are on the battleground, have told me this is a very contagious disease, they think that everybody ends up at least getting it, you might not get all the symptoms, but you'll be, you'll you'll have that, that infection, it's gonna happen, so I don't wanna end up sick and making my mom sick, or making my kid sick, or my grandkid sick, I don't want that to happen. And that, and the same thing, I don't want you to get sick, I don't want you to answer the door, I'll knock on your door and you come out and, you know, and and there can be an infection, we have to keep six feet away. So it makes it difficult, but we'll make it, it's gonna happen, we're gonna go out digitally, we're reaching people electronically, we're sending, we're gonna be sending emails. The hardest thing now is that I wanted to get qualified by petition. Petition's a document that you sign that describes who the candidate is, in this case, it would be me, and when it's, and it will say my name, and the person would print their name, sign their name as they do in the voter registration, that tells the super office elections, they agree that I should place my name on the ballot. And that's the hardest thing, I think if they're delaying everything, they should delay that qualification time as well, my opinion.
All right, well, guys, uh real quick, if you guys have any questions or comments, um questions for Tony or myself, or any comments below, uh I'm looking over at the screen and answering some questions and just chit-chatting as well. Again, in the future, um if you're watching this video and we're not live any longer, I will go back and respond to these comments, and if they're comments directed towards Tony, I'll make sure he responds, again, if you guys have any questions, please do so, and if you guys want to receive any of the live, uh if you wanna wa- get any notices for the lives uh that I put on, please go ahead and uh take them off, do so.
Joe, I I I like this idea that you have of chatting with people, I have a really good friend of mine, you probably know Larry Rodriguez, I tell him, when we win that commission seat, we're gonna do a show called Lattes with Larry, you know, it could be Jiving with Joe, it could be a number of things, just to get the word out to to everyday people. That's what this is about, this district is not something for the high and mighty or for, you know, specialized, this is about everybody, we all have a voice. And I'd I'd like to be the one that that presents a voice for you, so thank you for this today.
Oh, absolutely, man, absolutely, my honor. Um, so, do you have any opinions uh towards this situation, or or what are your opinions?
Yeah, remember, there there's a friend of mine, a hero, Colonel Rodriguez, he said once about Cubans, and you know that I'm Cuban heritage, and I'm proud of it too, an American, but of Cuban heritage. He said the Cubans like strong coffee, strong cigars, and they have strong opinions, so yeah, I have, and they go that way. But um, yeah, I do.
Wanna share some of some of your opinions?
On on this COVID stuff and what's happening? Yeah, let's talk about this, a lot of people are in disbelief, you know, I believe it, based on, I believe, I believe it based on medical evidence, people that are out there in the field working, those are the ones that are there testing people, those are the ones treating people. Had a friend of mine, nurse practitioner, told me that, you know, they don't have enough PPE, which is prof- uh personal protection equipment to go around, that's scary. These folks are dealing with people who are sick, we're seeing it out there, we, I seen people playing basketball yesterday. You gotta be out of your mind, this is a contact virus, that means you can get it by either the breathing on you, coughing on you, spitting on you, and or maybe the contact of the ball, I saw people using the, at the at the park, using the equipment, with no gloves, no sanitation, they're up there, you know, doing pull-ups and doing push-ups on on machines that are out there. So, I think that goes to, you know, what what I've been listening to. Now, if you listen to politicians, and I hate saying that, but if you listen to them, they may have agendas, I'm not saying they do or they don't, they may have. When it comes to medical people, it's not an agenda, they're trying to keep you alive, they're trying to keep people safe, we need to flatten this curve, and we've already seen that it works when you have, you know, the social distancing.
Yeah, I've I've been uh, been, it's been kind of rough, but I've been practicing that myself, you know, of course, I don't wanna get anybody in my family sick, or my kids, or myself for that matter, sick, so that's why I'm doing these chats, uh you know, I, I really wanted to do these in in, so we can, I can bring over some flan to you and.
It would be great, quarantine, right? We could use use some of that world's best flan, and I mean that, you know, that I used to host, I used to be on the board of the Ebor City Saturday Market, and for ten years, we did a flan festival over there, we're in cooperation with the director, uh Lynn, and it was awesome, we had forty-five contestants one time, I think it's the most times we ever had contestants, we always had a good, good amount of people show up, make the best they had, bring their best to show.
So you you would run the competitions and you judge them, right?
I would run them, but I'd also try them.
So, how many flans would you say you've tried?
Oh my god, I'm a world, world expert in flans, I'm not kidding you, I've tried from all the tropical stuff, from pineapple to mango to coconut to guava, and then the Cuban Cafe Golech, one that you make, I've had that, I've had uh Kahlua flan, butterscotch flan, dark chocolate flan, strawberry flan. Uh you name it, and I once floated a joke, I said that we had a, we had a recipe for garlic flan. I mean, I was just kidding, and I can't tell how many people came and asked me for the recipe, flan de ajo, I'm like, oh my god, I can't even imagine it.
So, then let me ask you a question, you, you're obviously very qualified from the flan perspective, you're sound, you're definitely a, a flan of sewer, like I call them.
Okay, you better believe it.
So you know your stuff when it comes to flan?
No, I know the flan, I can tell by looking at it, I can tell by tasting it, can tell by smelling it, you know, I can look at it and guess, it's gonna be a good one or a bad one. People will say, if you tasted forty flans at the same time, like one, then you rinse your mouth, the next one, you couldn't tell the difference, I go, I I beg to differ. You could tell the difference, and it was a really good flan, you go, hmm, that is really good, if it wasn't that good, you would know. And I'm not saying it just to butter you up, or even it to thanking you for having me on the show, but your flan is exceptional, it's probably the best I've ever had, and I've had some good ones. And I mean that, and I tell people that all the time.
So, of of all the flans that you've had, probably thousands of flans that you've tried?
Just look at my waistline, it'll tell you, I've had a lot of flans in my life.
So, out of all these flans, you're saying that mine's the best flan you've ever had?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's awesome, and and I appreciate that, and I definitely work extremely hard and have worked extremely hard to come up uh with the flan that tastes uh the way.
I remember when you first came up with this dream, you said, I'm gonna be making flan, I was like, okay, and you let me taste some of the ones you made at the beginning, and they were super, like, oh man, this is gonna be a, this is gonna take off. I admire you.
Been a long time coming, um uh again, I I don't know if you were able to hear me, but you know, it took me a long time to get the texture um and the creaminess and the density proper, um I and thank God that I started off with my mom's recipe. Uh had I not started off with her amazing recipe, I probably, I mean, I, there's no way I would be where I'm at today, she's the reason why I actually am doing what I'm doing, so.
That's a beautiful story, a beautiful testimony, mother, son, and to the world, I like it.
Yeah, so.
Something to be proud of, you know, it's a tremendous achievement, and I I talk to people out there, you know, when we we are distributing stuff at a fair or a carnival or something, and people always say, man, that's the best I've had, so.
That's what keeps me going, people's response, the response that I get from people, that's why I continue to do, it's like my um you know, hearing people say that, hey, I don't like flan, I have always hated flan, my flan, because I get them to taste it, but I tell them, you just never had a really good flan before, and it tastes. Oh, they're, I've completely changed, I I have, I have what I call as of today, a hundred percent, um I have a rate, and I actually use this when I do my festivals, I have a hundred percent conversion rate. Every person who tastes my flan that says that they didn't like flan has completely fallen apart with my flan.
Beautiful thing, I I hope I can do the same when I go talk to them, I can convert them over to the way we think.
When what?
I can convert them over to the way we think, so when they go to vote.
Oh, yes.
I hope I can have the same magic, now, you you've done a great job, and I said, the flan is exceptional, it's really, really incredible. And the thing about, when we picked Flan Festival, it was something I had, I had done with the director over at the market, they were saying, we need to bring Latin people back to the market. What can you think of? And I looked at her hair, and she had that golden color hair, I go, I knew it, I said, Flan Festival, she goes, what, what's flan? So I go, flan, flan, she used to make a pretty good one. Uh the deal was that every ethnicity makes it, Cubans make it, Colombians make it, Puerto Ricans make it, Mexicans make it, we all make it, we all think our moms was the best. Like I've used for all those beitas, yours is pretty darn good.
Thank you, you know, I, now that you just said that about all the uh ethnicities making, um I I was in in DC, I've said this before, but I'll just tell you if you didn't know. See, I think you do know, I was in DC and I did some research on where it originated from and everything, and I could not believe the fact that flan is literally a worldwide dessert, and it's actually the oldest dessert known to man, it's.
You you wrote about that, you talked.
Um, so that that definitely, uh you know, struck my interest, obviously, I mean, this is what I do, so I try to uh, you know, be the best at it as I possibly can and perfect it. Um, so I've done as much research as I possibly can. Yeah, the this is uh, it's very interesting to me um to know that practically every place, every every country on this planet has a derivative of flan, flan itself, whether it's leche flan, or or uh que si, as they call it in Venezuela, or flan like we know it, uh creme caramel, or just custard, even creme brulee, creme brulee flan are very similar, the only difference is the way that they have, they caramelize the sugar, whether it's on the bottom or the top, it's very similar.
I agree, and I like them all.
Uh let's go back to you, Tony, um would you, what would you do differently under the certain, uh under this current situation um as commissioner?
Well, I'm not gonna knock anybody who runs for office, I'll tell you that, if if stuff start coming out, you know, that happens a lot in campaigns, a lot of negative stuff, I'm not about that, you know, I'm a positive person. I admire anybody who wants to run to make a difference, you know, that's the way, that's why I'm running, I wanna make a difference, I wanna be that different commissioner, I wanna be the commissioner that comes to your house. I wanna be the commissioner that drinks coffee during a coffee shop, I wanna be the one that comes out of your business, I wanna be the commissioner that you can come downtown and see me, or I can come to your place and see you, I did that as a liaison, I'd meet with people in their places of business. And you would not believe how many people were scared to come downtown, or they didn't wanna come downtown, or they were scared of elevators, and I said, no, I'll come see you. I wanna be that commissioner that listens to the community, it isn't about what I have in my head, you know, the mayor does that, the mayor's one person, and that city takes direction of one mayor. County commission is seven, there's seven members, there's seven mayors, let's say, more or less, but you have to look at the boundary of our district, and what's best for the people of the district, what are they asking for, what do they want? How can you represent that, and that's what I wanna be, you don't represent that by sitting in the tower all day long, you know, in the pink building downtown, and if you don't come out, and if you're not with the people, then you're in the wrong business, and people forget that, you know? You get elected, and you need to come out, you need to continue doing what you've been doing, you need to go see people, talk to people, you need to be driving, if that district is your district, and you need to go on that district at least from one end to the other, you know, I'm lucky that I've been out there thirty-five and a half years, I've been out in those streets forever, and I know those streets, I know those neighborhoods. I see the traffic, I see the problems, I hear it, I smell it, I live it, I wanna, I wanna do it for the better. There's smarter ways to work government, there's more things that come out of the box, you'll remember back when we had all those hurricanes, one of the biggest things I've ever done was to step out of the box, and I talked to the people at the county, they said, oh, nobody cares about hurricanes, you know, they don't wanna get ready, you know, they'll wait for the last minute, it's human nature, I understood that, but I went and I saw a guy named Gisbert, he's our emergency management guy, and he said, you do it, I support you. Contacted the governor at the time, which was Jeb Bush, the next day, I got a contact from Mr. Fugate. Fugate was the emergency manager for the state of Florida, and he said, the governor asked me to help you do this, and we did the first ever bilingual hurricane slash disaster preparedness event in the whole inside, in the whole entire United States, which to me was like, I thought it would be a routine thing to do, we live near water, we live with flat land. We are in constant danger of hurricane, whenever the season is up. Now, depending what happens with this, with all this virus stuff, I hope we're out of it by the time hurricane season comes up, I would hate to imagine us in situ right now, and having a s- of early season storm come in, and what we saw with the toilet paper shortage and the water, and the people hoarding food, and the crime and everything else. Talk about a mega disaster, we need to be ready, we should, we should have plans for that, we should be out there now, talking about it and getting ready for it, and talking to people about it, not to scare them, I don't wanna scare people. There's another side to this, is that some people think that this is all made up and, you know, I don't wanna hurt any small businesses, that's the backbone of America, it's hurting already, I know they're hurting. I have friends out there, they're telling me, they say, hey, we're hurting now, right now is when we need the money, right now is when we need to stem all this, we're hurting right now, and it's gonna get worse, unfortunately. But how do you balance the two, what's better for people in general, or what's better for, you know, for politics? And I I I plan to say what's better for the people in general, I wanna keep my mom alive, I wanna keep our elderly people, you know, healthy, I wanna keep me healthy, I'm sixty-two. You know, so we have to take care of our people and our kids, and that comes first, we'll figure it out, we'll fix this, you know, America is too big to fall to its knees over one little thing like us. It's serious, but we need to attack it together, I tell people that, I wanna give you hope, we'll get through this, we'll do this together, but we gotta do it in our houses, separate from people for now, just for now. Get away so we don't overwhelm, we don't have a tsunami effect on the hospitals.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't even think about the hurricane, that's a def- that's definitely a good point you bring up.
Thinking about it.
Again, that like, you brought that up, and that's uh pretty crazy to even think about, you're right.
This district's surrounded by water, starting at Ruskin, it comes all along, and it goes all the way to Penellas County, and it's flat land. There's not a whole lot of hills here, not, we don't know where to run if we get a lot of water coming hurricane, but we need to start thinking about that now, right now.
I mean, you see, you see what happens there in um off of Bay Shore when we get, you know, the hurricane doesn't even hit us, or we get a bad storm, you know, it's completely underwater, all of Bay Shore, and even and e- and you know what, I just, that just, that just made me think of something, if that was to happen, people won't even be able to get into Tampa General, which is one of the, one of the you know, biggest and best hospitals here in in Tampa.
Yeah, I've always wondered about that, you know, they have a plan, I don't know what the plan is, they get people in or out, they do have a plan.
Oh, I guess, there's your floating bridge.
The COVID is all, they're working on it over there close to the state of testing, and that's another thing, people need to follow rules, and what they do is they just show up and they, you know, demand the test, it's not that way. You have to make. People need to follow rules, and what they do is they just show up, and they, you know, demand the test, it's not that way, you have to make. You have to make your reservations, and you have to, you have to make things happen. So, that's the deal with that, you know, we've got a plan ahead. Talking about drainage, we're, our drainage system, our infrastructure is horrible, and it has been. That lands, the water really doesn't run anywhere.
Yeah, I, I remember, I mean, South Damaeby, down in South Tampa. You drive around, and you know, you get a regular, you know, hard sun, uh, summer thunderstorm. And you get some rain, and all of that is flooded as well.
That's exactly where it floods. It has to change, they say they have, I get to see it, I know we're supposed to see it. Let me lower this here, the granddaughter's having a good time.
So, Tony, how can the people, uh, contribute to your campaign? How can they be a part of your campaign and contribute to it?
There you go, let me talk a little bit about that, there's two ways they can help us out, if they wanna volunteer, they can reach me through Messenger, Facebook Messenger, easily, just send me a message. With your email, I'd be happy to, to have you join the team, you know, I always said, I need a really good circle, I got a good circle of close people that are. Supporting me and helping me through this, another way they can sign is a petition, we can email it to you, you can sign it, mail it back to an address for me. That petition, like I said, just gives me per- permission to put my name on the, on the ballot. So I can get on there, and I'm trying to get that done, this, this virus thing has, has kinda stopped a lot of that. Put a pause in it, but we can do it that way, if they wanna make a contribution, they can always send a contribution to, um. Campaign, I, I have a website, it's, it's, uh, WWW.VoteTonyMorejon. Dot com, you can go on there and see the website, and it gives you advice as to where to. Uh, what, what to do, and who to, who to send the stuff to. I'm, I'd be happy to have anybody who believes like I do, that we can make this a better place.
Well, what I'm gonna do is, um, when this is over, I'll, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add a link to this video. Uh, that goes straight to your petition, and as well to your website, that way people can reach you easier.
Yeah, and hey, I enjoyed watching my friend the Tiger yesterday. Anthony Gonzalez, the attorney. Don't easy me, I, my attorney, he's a really good friend of mine, we've known each other since childhood, and, uh. One heck of a trainer, another Tiger's world, it's, uh, it's a great combination, he needs his own reality show. Eagle advice, he can beat somebody in the courtroom, he can beat him in the gym, he's just a super guy, so I was, I was happy to see that. And there's a couple other people more that we're gonna send your way, because this is a good thing you're doing.
Appreciate that, yeah, next week, I got a, I ca- I'm still waiting to get here back from a few people. I do have, I actually have a, a local doctor, he's a pediatrician, he's actually my children's pediatrician. And you may know his cousin, um, he's no longer with us, but, uh, Ovidio Mendez, he was my pediatrician growing up. And this is his cousin, uh, he will be on the show, his name is Florencio Nadal, um, Dr. Nadal. Uh, he's a good man, he's, uh. I'm sure he's got a lot to say with the children in this, uh, in the virus and stuff like that, so we'll have him on on Wednesday for sure.
Awesome, good.
We got a good lineup coming up next week, and I'll, I'll disclose that here, uh, maybe later on tonight, or, or maybe over the weekend.
This stuff is over, we're gonna do a flan tasting, every, all the guests come in.
That's exactly what I wanna do.
Awesome.
Tony, thank you sir very much for, uh, your time, uh, I know that you're there taking care of your, your, uh, granddaughters as well. Um, so I appreciate you taking the time to do the show, um, I, I really am, uh, you know, you have my vote, one hundred percent.
Thank you.
Count on that, I've, uh, you know, for as long as I've known you, the things that I see, and have seen you do, I mean, you, you've got my vote, I believe in you, Tony, for sure.
Thank you, Joe, that means a lot to me, I, I, I'm honored by that, sincerely, thank you.
Tony, I appreciate it. Thank you again, brother.
You got it, we'll, we'll get through this together, thank you.
That's correct. Alright, Tony, thank you. Alright, guys, sorry about that, but, so that was, uh, Mr. Tony Morejon. Uh, he is an amazing guy, I, I completely trust and, uh, believe in him, and I know that he would do very good, if not. Uh, I would say he would probably be the best, uh, candidate for that position, in my personal opinion, I know what he does, I've seen what he does. Um, you know, he's helped me out quite a bit, he's actually, uh, helped, uh, me network with, uh, with a lot of people here in our community. Um, and with other businesses, to actually help me get my product into, um, other restaurants and stuff. Uh, this guy is very helpful, he, he's helped me, uh, he's known me and my families, he's known my family since before I, I was born. Um, so, you know, he's been around in this community for a long time, helping lots of people, so, I mean, really look at him. Uh, listen to him and what he has to say, and vote for him, um, he's gonna be very helpful, he's gonna be the best guy for the job. That I can tell you, I can promise you that, guys, so, uh, again, awesome man, so. Guys, I appreciate you staying with us, um, all this time, um, again, if you have any questions or comments, I will respond to them. Uh, when I get off, I will, uh, when I get off here, off the air, I, I will respond to, to anyone that I have not. If you have any further questions, comments, or you wanna see anybody in particular on the show, please write that information below. If you wanna get live updates, please click on the live, and click on the link to do so. Next week, next week, I will have for sure, um, like I was telling you before. His name is Florencio Nadal, he has, or Nadal, he has a, uh, a couple practices, he's a pediatrician. Uh, I was gonna definitely, uh, talk to him a little bit, or a lot about COVID nineteen, the corona- coronavirus. And how is it affecting, um, the children and kids, and maybe even at his practice, what, what's going on there, his practice, what he's doing different. I imagine by Wednesday, which is five days from today, um, things are gonna be, uh, a little bit different. Um, hopefully, unfortunately, probably, maybe to the wor- for the worst, um, but, you know, I, I hope and pray that it's not. Um, but we'll, uh, hear what he has to say, on Tuesday, I will have, um. I will have the president of the Miami Brickle, uh, Chamber of Commerce, his name is Avellio Medina. Another awesome guy, um, he's, if you don't know who he is, he's, um, he's awesome, he knows everybody and anybody. Um, you know, they say that, um, Pit Bull is Mr. Three O Five, but I beg to differ, he is the real Mr. Three O Five. Um, so tune in, uh, on Tuesday for him, and, uh, for the other days of the week, I still have, uh, a couple. Uh, people to, to fill in and, uh, get for sure, so I'll follow up with you guys over the weekend. Uh, so come back, make sure to come back and see us on Monday, I might come in on, on Friday, tomorrow, and, and Sunday, and just talk to you guys a little bit. Uh, myself personally, but we'll see, anything major comes up, then for sure, you'll, you'll see me. Until then, thank you very much, everybody, for staying with me, for viewing these, uh, live chats, uh, live chats. Please share these, so that way, uh, more people can see them, and they can see what's really going on. With other, uh, with all the businesses here within the community, and how it's affecting them, what you can do. Um, you know, this is gonna be a, a platform, kind of out of the blue for me, I was, uh, you know, I really wanted to do this. And talk more about flan, and have people, uh, taste the flan, uh, maybe in, you know, trying to find people that haven't had my flan before, and just getting their, their reactions. Uh, but you know what, I've had to change, I've had to change what I'm doing, uh, and alter, just like everybody else has. Um, you know, things are different, um, but I'm rolling with the punches, and I think this is a good thing, I, I, I really, I really like this, uh, I'm able to talk to other. Uh, community leaders and, and business owners, um, and, and get their takes on the current situation, and, and again. Uh, spread the word on how you can, uh, continue to support them, and, and, uh, you know, and how we can get through this all together. So, thank you very much again, uh, I will see you for sure next week, and, uh, we'll talk some more, thanks for standing by, guys, I appreciate it, thanks.